We call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Counselor Glenn.
Oh Father, I'm asking for a special prayer tonight for my dad, Lord. Just touch him tonight, Lord, be with him tonight. And Lord, I thank you so much for have you done all the prayers that have been given out to him. Lord bless every city council here tonight, Lord. Clear all their minds, Lord, and put their mind to the city business that needs to be done tonight. In Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen. We'll next have the pledge of allegiance. This evening we've got four students from Bath High School. Madison Baxter, Alex Schrader, Tori Whitaker, and Levi Mormon. And we'll ask them to start us off with the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Low.
Here.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Mrs. Miles.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here.
Are there any amendments to tonight's?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I'd like to add Mark Walters, or Walters, for potholes and remove Tim Guthrie from the privilege of the floor.
The motion on the second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next on the agenda is privilege of the floor, and Mark Walters has been approved. Mr. Walters will give people three minutes to state your case, and then we will, we don't respond, but we'll let you know what we're gonna do. We'll refer to your issue too. But, need you to state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Mark Walters, 282 North Phillips, Harrod, Ohio, 45850. I had to ask for reimbursement for damages on a vehicle that I drive through the city quite a lot. And I produced estimates to the law department here. Was told I'd get responded to in a few weeks, which I did. It was a denial letter, and for the reason being that no prior notices was made to problems with streets in that area in the past. And I'm here tonight disagreeing with that because I have called in numerous times, not just about that street, but Grand Avenue, numerous streets here. And I got responses like, "We'll document that and see that it gets attention," was one response. Six months later went by, same streets, same condition. I lease farm west over by Yelida and northeast of here. And so I do a lot of traveling in and out of the city to tractor supply, different places. I've used in the same street a lot sometimes. And one of my objections also is that one of the people that I spoke with, after making numerous reports on the same street, told me, and I quote, "Well, it depends on what people live on that street, to be honest with you, which ones gets fixed first." And I said, "Excuse me, can you repeat that?" I couldn't believe that that's what I was hearing. So I'm here tonight to request again for monies that I put out for repairs on my vehicle on driving it on these streets, and namely North Street at the time, which now the street that I complained about is this been recently, they've cut out patches and put in, which has helped that particular street. But I've got various streets in mind over by Kibbe, on Kibbe rather. And they, they also asked me what streets it is specifically, what two intersections it's in between, which I don't mind telling them that, but the recollection of it don't come to mind when they're on the phone with me. And so I, I gotta actually drive all the way over there again to see what. And I don't feel that is, should be up to me to have to do, so.
Okay. Your options are, since it's gone through the Small Claims Advisory Committee, Mr. Gager? Okay. You can submit a letter to council to have it considered as a, paid as a moral obligation, and it'll go through one of our Public Works Committee for review and determination. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
Uh, consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that item A of the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved, and item B and C be received and filed.
Second.
The motion on the second is to receive, file, and approve item A, and to receive and file items B and C. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that communication number one, received and filed, legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion on the second is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number two be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion on the second is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From Chief Hefner regarding legislation to apply for assistance to firefighters grant.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number three be received, filed, and legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion on the second is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From Chief Hefner regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Ellis Door and Window.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number four be received, filed, and legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion on the second is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Director of Utilities regarding garbage refuse and recycling rates.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number five be received and filed.
Second.
The motion on the second is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Um, I was wondering if the Director, Gary Shealy, could come up. Explain to me the third paragraph on the recyclable containers. I'm reading here about an option to order, and then a 60-day period to allow two opportunities for input.
Mr. President, Counselors. If you recall, when we initially discussed this as a utilities committee, we were looking at a means to improve the recycled pickup container out on the street. And the smaller 35-gallon container under high winds has more of a propensity to fall over, where the 65-gallon container, which is the one that we're more of a test trial, are asking the residents, and we haven't done that yet. We will be doing that here in the near future if they would like to move to that larger container. And it's an issue more of about the stability of the container out on the street during windy days.
But we can still keep the 35?
Still, right. This is, this is for those residents who have had problems and have asked us to consider another, another process. We, this is not a moving to another type of container where it's a mandatory type process. They'll still have the option to have the 35-gallon container, or they can retain that one, or they can move to the 65-gallon should they like.
And it'll be in the utility bill when you're prepared to?
Right.
Take orders or whatever?
Right. There'll be a, there'll be a, have them call into, into our customer service area like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
It's a cost, is gonna be a cost for that 65-gallon, more money?
Uh, we'll, we will, well, there'll be a cost, whatever we buy, we have to buy containers. We buy containers all through the year, so.
Right. Don't tell me what cost the customers.
But there's no cost to the resident.
No cost to the customer.
There's no cost with any, any of the, the only container cost we have is for yard waste. The rest are provided by the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McLean.
Mr. Shealy, if you don't mind while you're standing there, if you would just give us a synopsis of what's going on here with this. I know it's a savings to all the residents of the city, and if you'll just let them know how long that is and stuff like that, that would help me.
Our current charge that we have for service right now is $20.25 is what the residents basically have paid for, basically the last five years. Early in our last contract, there was a minor adjustment because of some landfill fees. The billing, or the bid that we went out for was a very, very aggressive bid by Allen County Refuge. And as we basically roll that in, look at it, we will reduce the bill from $20.25 down to $19.86. So, you know, there is a, you know, a reduction from the standpoint based upon the bid that we got from, from Allen County Refuge. And the contract is a seven-year contract, so if there's no landfill or solid waste district charges, that fee will be good for the next seven years. The contract does allow for an additional one-year extension at the end of that seven-year period, provided both the city ourselves, as well as the contractor, is willing to do that. So it's a long period of time, and I think it'd be really advantageous to the residents.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I need to amend my motion to include that the law director be able to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second.
Okay. The motion on the second then is to receive and file communication number five, and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to enter into a contract with MWH for the Ottawa River Phase Two.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number six be received and filed.
Second.
The motion on the second is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number seven.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to expend funds from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number seven be received, filed, and legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion on the second is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Deputy Law Director requesting legislation to amend Sections 408.02 and 434.03.
Mr. President.
Ms. Miles.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed.
Second.
The motion on the second is to receive and file communication number eight.
We need legislation.
Legislation.
Mrs. Miles.
And I authorize legislation to be prepared by the auditor.
The law director.
Law director. Excuse me, by the law director, excuse me.
Second.
I mean, the auditor's not here.
So dump it all on the law director, yeah.
People pass it on.
The motion on the second is to receive and file communication number eight to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Law Director requesting legislation to align the city code with state law regarding towing charges.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that communication number nine be received and filed, and authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation or paperwork, whatever. I was going to.
You was going to. Second.
The motion on the second is to receive and file communication number nine, and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation.
Just wants to get it rolling.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Auditor regarding the Contract Labor Board.
Mr. President.
Mr. Low.
I move that communication number 10 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion on the second is to receive and file communication number 10. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 11.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to enter into a contract with Seamless Construction Company.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number 11 be received and filed, and that the law director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion on the second is to receive and file communication number 11, and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 12.
From the City Engineer requesting legislation to amend the contract with Smith Paving and Excavating.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number 12 be received and filed, and the law director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion on the second is to receive and file communication number 12, and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 13.
From the Council President regarding the appointment of Deb Bogey to the Civil Service Board.
Mr. President.
Mr. Low.
I move that communication number 13 be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion on the second is to receive, file, and approve communication number 13. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next we have reports of officials, Amy Odom, regarding the CAPER.
Mr. President, council members, mayor, and guests. I'm here tonight to let the community and council know that we are ready to report on the activity of last year's CDBG and home activities. The CAPER is the Consolidated Annual Plan Performance Report that is sent into HUD each year. We have a different way of reviewing it for you this year. We have two versions. One is the PowerPoint version, which is basically concentrating on all of the activities and the achievements. And then the long LP playing version, the required version, that we submit to HUD, which has all of the background documentation. I'm making council and the community aware tonight, but both of these versions will be available for review through December 1st, and we invite a community comment on this. Both will be posted on the city website, also available through the Department of Community Development Facebook page. And copies of both of these documents will be placed at the Department of Community Development and at the public library. If you remember, every year we go through a fairly lengthy allocation process where we review different kinds of activities for CDBG and home funding. And as we remind people each year, they're very distinct in different kinds of funding sources that come from the federal government. CDBG covers a broad variety of activities that benefit low-to-moderate income families, and also economic development activities. Home dollars can only be used for housing activities that benefit low-to-moderate income persons. What you'll find in the report, and I'll be working from the PowerPoint, because it's the quick version, is first talking about our housing achievements and housing development. Going through the projects that were from September of 1 of 20, excuse me, I always do this backwards. October 1 of 2013 through September 30, 2014, that's the year that we're covering. So if you look at the housing development under new housing funded under home dollars, are the first slides that we talk about. And we have a requirement to set aside 15% of our funds for CHODO projects. New Lima is our CHODO, however, in that year they did not have a project, so that money was simply set aside. However, we are pleased to report in the last year that all seven home-funded units at Whittier Place have now been sold. The Whittier Place project is now complete. Two homes were developed and sold by Habitat for Humanity at that site. And one house is under construction. In fact, I believe it's complete, and they are in closing this week. So we're very pleased that the Whittier Home Project, which was started by New Lima, was closed within this program year. There was no new operation funds provided to New Lima within the last program year, again, because they did not have any new projects. As for in-house projects and housing, what the city directly provided, we do have an update repair program. Again, the update program is where we provide up to $15,000 in a home repair loan. We had hoped to have six homes repaired. We only attained four. We find that people, again, have difficulty meeting the home requirement of bringing the entire home up to code. That's when you use those dollars that requires it, and sometimes 15,000 doesn't make it. But we did have four persons take advantage of it. 83% of them were female heads of households, and 71% of the persons were minority. As for the first home Lima program, the home dollars also fund down payment assistance. And we were pleased that we had a goal of 16 new buyers this year, and 15 new home buyers were created in the city of Lima using down payment assistance. That's always exciting because that resulted in $891,000 in home sales in the city of Lima by the assistance provided through this program. Again, what we find interestingly is the majority of the beneficiaries were below 40 years of age. 56% of them were female heads of household, and 19% were minority. The other housing programs we provide through this is a renew loan. That's a larger loan that has to be paid back. We talked about this last year as we talked about our setting up this current programming year. Again, we have difficulty. One, it's because people have to pay it back, and they are not as interested in using that resource. And also because the home has to be brought up to code for $25,000, or $25,000. Again, we did not, if you remember, allocate any new funds for the current program year, and we're putting that money back into our home down payment program. Additionally, as part of the home program is the counseling component that goes with the down payment assistance. We actually had 60 households apply and attend at least one household homeownership training session, but 34 households completed the training, which means that they would be eligible for down payment assistance if they can find a home within the next two years to use that. So those are the numbers or the activities that were created in our home projects. There is a map, again, for those at home, you can view at our website showing where those homes were purchased, and also where the home loans were created. Another activity that we must provide is fair housing assistance. And again, that program benefited over 400 families this year in assisting them with fair housing questions. That's the first section of funds that we use for home-related projects. The next section is the more general, which is CDBG funds, Community Development Funds. And it funds a variety of different programs. And again, I'm just giving you the highlights tonight. The Police Support Services Program is the assistance we provide the Lima Police Department with police aides. They were two part-time community service aides. Within last program year, they inspected 58 households. That's provide assistance to people who may have questions about how to better secure their home, or also providing assistance after burglary or break-in occurs to help people understand how they can better secure their property. They gave 112 presentations on crime prevention and personal safety. They also did graffiti investigation. If you remember that there's a really wonderful partnership between the Lima Police Department and LACNIP. The Lima Police Department investigates it, LACNIP, our neighborhood network, actually goes out and removes the graffiti for them. Overall, through the security surveys, the graffiti abatement, the neighborhood presentations, they served over 5,000 people through this program. Demolitions, another CDBG-funded activity went very well. As you know, we've had a lot of other sources of demolition funds the last couple of years, but with CDBG funds. The goal was to demolish three structures, but they actually did eight. Two of those were commercial. CDBG funds will primarily be used for commercial because the other demolition funds we've received do not allow commercial. So they did very well in using those funds and leveraging the other demolition funds we've been able to receive. Neighborhood Services is another program that's funded through CDBG. And our goal was to assist 10 neighborhood associations. 12 were actually assisted, however, two did become inactive in the last program year. Again, that's always a great use of our time and money because those funds are leveraged to assist neighborhood organizations and community organizations coordinate over 2,279 volunteers to produce over 10,000 hours of volunteer activity in our community. For those of you who were lucky enough to attend the LACNIP annual dinner last week, I think their presentation did a good job explaining the value of those volunteer hours. The dollar amount is usually equated to $21 an hour, so actually over $224,000 worth of volunteer labor come into our community every year through our neighborhood groups with assistance from our Neighborhood Services Program. CDBG money was also used in park improvements where there were able to acquire and construct some bike, off-road bike path improvements that helped link several of our parks. The other programs that are funded by CDBG are property maintenance. The goal was to inspect over 2,000 homes. It actually, 2,382 homes were inspected. That actually means more than just individual inspections. Over 9,000 inspections occurred when they involved with over 2,000 properties. There were 765 complaints of junk auto that were responded to, and our specified parcel program maintains nearly 600 vacant and abandoned lots and well. Reminding you that the property maintenance expenditure only really pays for staff time, that the majority of the cleanup costs are general fund, which we then try to recoup by placing those on taxes and asking for payment. Recreation programs are supported in a small way by CDBG funds this year. We're over 200 kids, we had hoped to reach over 200 kids, but 164 participated in the four summer playground programs, with 92 of them being from low-to-moderate income households. There's a lovely chart in this showing you a greater breakout of property maintenance. The breakdown always continues to be weeds, and weeds are the largest part of the work that we seem to accomplish because weeds always come back. But this gives you an idea of the activity that our property maintenance inspectors engaged in. Curb and street reconstruction is also supported by CDBG funds. It's often used as a matching amount to attract other dollars. I think Mr. Alstro and Mr. Niemeyer have mentioned during our CDBG hearings that it leverages many, many times over the dollars that are contributed from CDBG. 49 blocks of streets received curb reconstruction. And the corner sidewalks, again, you know that citizens are responsible for doing their own sidewalks, but the curbs, corners, which are AVA accessible and are ramped, were replaced as well. Over 7,000 square feet of corner sidewalks. When broken down, you'll see on the map the areas that that served, and there's an estimate of at least 1,400 households are touched by that. The last two sections that we use are CDBG funds are our economic development and career pathways. We don't have a lot of money that falls under that activity. But the Curb Pathway Program, if you remember, is that wonderful program through roads that gives people an opportunity for free training, that leads them on to further training in process operation. This was recognized this year by HUD, and their 40th anniversary success story is an excellent model for training in our communities because it is a stack certificate program that moves people up from basic job skills all the way up to an associate degree over a period of time. We had 50 Lima residents enrolled, and we had about a 40-to-50-person goal, which is great. 33 of them at least attended one basic training, and 13 received actual certification through roads. Five more were certified through Bradfield Center. Five more were certified through Bradfield Center, no cost to the program. That means that there was a partnership from another grant that covered that, but it's nice to know that there were 18 people who did receive certification this year. Those who are certified are then eligible for referral to employment and get assistance in interviews, and this shows, again, the number of persons who did attend the class and the numbers that completed. The last item in economic development was the United Way Grant Writer Program. Council, last year, which was the first year, granted the United Way some funding to be able to reach out to community organizations to increase their ability to get their own money, to find their own grants. They assisted six different, they insisted six different grants, two of which were funded for $23,000. They did do three grant writing workshops, and over 40 different organizations attended. Their goal was 35, so they've done well. Over 60 potential sources of funding were identified, meaning that the United Way continues to work through with these individuals to see if we can bring more funds in through the grant process. And if you remember, Mr. Haynes was here a few council meetings ago to talk about their activity. The last, but not least, is general administration, basically the funds that it takes to run the program. Lima, again, continues to be proud that we keep our costs under the required 20% cap. It actually came in at, I believe, 17% this year. And under general administration, that's where we fund our fair housing as well. That's where that gets slotted. It's a very quick overview, but it's a lot of information, and I've realized over the years, it doesn't do justice for me to try to run through all of this detail in one council meeting. So this year, the detail will be available online. I'd like to thank Aloca Roy, our Associate Planner, and Candice Snow, our Grant System Specialist, for putting together the massive amounts of data and the massive amounts of reporting that go on all year round to get this information back to HUD. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them here, but I encourage you to take a look, take some time to review these, council members as well as the general public, and give us a call, an email, or write us a note. Any of your concerns or responses are forwarded to HUD and are helpful in helping us look at planning for next year. That's the speed version, folks, so if there's anything else I can do, please let me know.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo.
I have a quick question. And your definition of minority, is this anything other than Caucasian?
Yes, there is, by HUD standards. There is a very specific delineation of Hispanic, African-American, American Indian, Asian, and Pacific Islander, I believe, are the ones. Maybe missing one, but it is a variety.
The reason why I'm asking is, on one page it says, for obtained, you had a goal of six homes, 83% of the beneficiaries were female-headed, and 71% were minority. So them being a female is not considered a minority in this report?
No, correct.
Okay, then one.
Yeah, no, that meaning that inclusive of all the folks, regardless of male or female, that percentage were considered to be minority by HUD.
Okay. Next question. Could you explain one more time with the Lima residents enrollment, because I had been asking for this for a while. Seven thousand foot roads, we had 20 that didn't complete it, 13 that did complete it. On this 13 that did complete, I'm going to ask the same question I've been asking for five years. Did any of these individuals stay in Lima, work in Lima?
And as you are provided that information by roads, as you've requested, Mr. Lo, the answer is, the majority of jobs, the majority of employment for process operator jobs occurs at Procter &amp; Gamble, it occurs at Ford, it occurs at Husky, which is not inside the city limits. If you are asking about where they reside, if that's the question?
That'd be a start.
Okay, because they may be employed outside the city, but they may reside, continue to reside within the city.
Okay, and this last program that was held, he was, he had to cancel that program because he didn't have enough individuals to take that class?
That may be, and that would be within this program year, and then they do reschedule them.
Okay. Do you know when that is?
No, but we have to give that information for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Odom.
Thank you.
Next is Major Protsman regarding the prescription drug drop-off program.
Just a quick summary of the free medication collection event that happened on October 25th. This is just where people could drop off their unwanted, unused, or expired medication and know that it would be disposed of properly. There were several organizations that partnered together to make this event successful. They were the Lima Police Department, Allen County Sheriff's Office, Allen County Children's Services, University of Finley College of Pharmacy, Raider Environmental, Health Partners of Western Ohio, Chief Supermarkets, Lima Memorial Health System, Kmart, and North Central Ohio Solid Waste District. And I also need to say thank you to Jennifer Clark from Health Partners, as she was one who took the lead and made sure that everything was organized. This event is usually held once a year in this county and started in 2007, and there are many communities that hold similar events across the country, because we've learned two very important things. One is that when people flush or otherwise dispose of medication improperly, it's harmful for our environment. The second one is the amount of individuals who are becoming addicted to pain medications is on the rise, and the potential for these individuals to move to illegal street drugs, particularly heroin, is high. In 2007, there were a few, if any, heroin cases in Allen County, and a few pharmaceutical cases that were handled by drug units. Compare that to the first nine months in 2014. There were 133 heroin cases and 44 pharmaceutical cases handled by the West Central Ohio Crime Task Force. The total number of drug cases handled by them in that same time period was 452. That means that 39% of the cases that they have handled have involved heroin or pharmaceutical drugs. From 2010 through 2012, three years, they handled 188 heroin cases. In 2013, in the first nine months of 2014, one year and nine months, they handled 289 heroin cases, a significant increase. We know that this is a problem. People become addicted to pain medication, whether it be for a legitimate medical need or from using it for recreational purposes, are at a high risk of becoming heroin users. This is why law enforcement is very thankful for all the organizations, businesses, and volunteers who take part in this event to help prevent these medications from damaging our environment or getting into the hands of the wrong people. And because of all the hard work that they did, this year, they collected over 720 pounds in medication. And for that, we would like to commend them for a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Major. Next, we have committee reports, the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council have received a copy, and I also included information that was handed out at the committee. The Public Works Committee met November 10 at 5:00 in the council conference room. We had two subjects before us, leases of the city property as it pertained to LACNIP and claim to be considered under moral obligation. The first matter of the lease, we'd had a previous meeting on this subject, and the Resource Center Volunteer Coordinator, now Lester, was directed to work and get, work and issue a letter, as she met with the board, to the Public Works Director on their decision, and a letter was received, and this was the purpose of this meeting, again, on this. The letter stated that they wanted to leave the lease as is. So we had a motion to receive the letter and also to remove the issue from committee and that passed. The second issue claimed to be considered under moral obligation pertaining to a pothole incident. Saul Allen was there, representing the Public Works Department Deputy Director. He's the one that passed out color photos of the area, also a listing of the claims against the city for 2014, where I broke down in the report that of the 25 claims, 15 were for pothole claims, which also reflected they had all been denied and had all been throughout the city of Lima. Mr. Allen also wanted to show the committee that they are consistent on this issue. They do take, when a citizen calls, they have a log of the call and of the issued work order. The chair asks the citizens in the future, when you call, get the name of the person you're speaking to, write down the date and the time that you've called it in for future use, as well for the committee. In this instance, the claim person, Mr. Lo, had called, the incident had occurred, and he called in on the 26th. The city had made repairs on the 27th. The city also stated that there wasn't a firm time, but within a week or less, and in this case, one day from the call, that they give the list to the crew to go out and fill those potholes and any that they see along the way. The chair had asked for a motion to pay under moral obligation. A motion was made, but no second was obtained, so the motion and the issue died in committee. Motion was made to adjourn the meeting at 5:23. I respectfully submit this, and, Mr. President, I move that the committee report be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve the Public Works Committee as stated by Councilor Adams. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next is the committee report for the council of the whole committee. Written copy has been submitted and was with the packet. The ordinance involving the suspension of the enforcement of the snow ordinance, sidewalk portion is on tonight's agenda. I'll simply move that this committee report be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve the committee report. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next, we have Human Resources Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On November the 6, Human Resource Committee held a meeting to discuss the civil service rules for the city of Lima. Rules 1 through 4.5 were reviewed. There was a lot of discussion there. Each council member has got a copy of the committee minutes, and I ask that my report be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve the Human Resources Committee report. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. And next, we have the Finance Committee report, I believe there are two of them.
Right. Mr. President, there was a meeting on October the 2nd and a second meeting on 11/11, and they both had the same subject. It was the automatic pay raise or pay increases for all elected officials. There is legislation on tonight's agenda based upon the result of both of these meetings that changes the way raises are granted, tying it to the Consumer Price Index for all elected officials, doing it at different times, and for the mayor and the law director having a two-year period beginning in 2018 with no increase. Each council member has a copy of the minutes and the charts received from the auditor that were used in these meetings. I move that these reports be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve the committee reports as submitted by Councilor Tevin. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next, new resolutions, ordinance 25414.
This is the second reading, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Superior Act.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that ordinance number 254-14 be passed on the second reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 25414 on its second reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I don't know if anyone's mayor or someone else, since the auditor's not here. This position is for calendar year 2015. Is there a plan on filling the position with a permanent employee, and can we stop the contract at any time in 2015? I'll follow up with the auditor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn.
No.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
No.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
No.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Mrs. Adams.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Ordinance 25414 will go to third reading, having failed to get the required six votes to be passed on its second reading. Ordinance 26114.
Amending Section 244.28 of the certified ordinances of Lima High.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that ordinance 26114 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 26114 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn.
No.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 26114 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-one vote. Ordinance 26214.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance charges on premises in the city of Lima.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 26214 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 26214 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 26214 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 26314.
Authorizing an expenditure from a law enforcement trust fund account for a contract with Zacharias Severosus.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 26314 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 26314 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
No.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 26314 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-one vote. Ordinance 26414.
Authorizing the mayor to apply for, accept, receive, and administer an assistance to firefighters grant.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 26414 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 26414 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 26414 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 26514.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Ellis Door &amp; Window.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 26514 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 26514 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 26514 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 26614.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with MWH Global Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 26614 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 26614 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin. Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 26614 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 26714.
Amending the 2014 annual budget.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin. I move that ordinance 26714 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 26714 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 26514 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 26614.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with MWH Global, Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance number 26814 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 26814 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 26614 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 26714.
Amending the 2014 annual budget.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin. I move that ordinance 26714 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 26714 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 26714 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 26814.
Amending section 1806.05 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance number 26814 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 26814 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 26614 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 26714.
Amending the 2014 annual budget.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin. I move that ordinance 26714 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 26714 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 26714 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 26814.
Amending section 1806.05 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance number 26814 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 26814 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes. Ordinance 26814 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Misselenia's Business, Mr. Glenn.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for the prayers that have been, the calls from my father. Thank you guys so much. It's been a tough time for us, but we're going to get through it. We just buried our aunt today, so our family's been through a lot. Also, I'm asking everyone to say a prayer for Laura Anderson's family, her funeral today. I think it's a late day, because Amy has said something about that. And also, say a prayer for Jimmy Workerson. He's in, up at St. Rita's, and he's on a ventilator right now, but I know God can move it. A couple of things we got here on December 11, and what we're doing, we're getting all the neighborhood associations. Some of them have some member problems, so we're going to try to put some scholarships together, bring their members out. The South Side, the King Neighborhood, Kiwi Corner, Hoover Park, Riverside North, we're going to be doing this meeting on December 11 at 6:00 PM, and we're going to put it in line with a tire of Kiwi Corner. Most of the people there, the members there in that area live in the tower, so we're going to bring it to them. So, we're asking everybody to come out. We'll be sending letters out to all the presidents, so we can make sure that you can bring people in. We have the scholarship, we have money to pay for their membership, but we want to get them all together, and so we can tell them what they want to do for this, in the sixth ward there, this coming spring, in summer. So, it's very important that we attend, have representatives on, 11/10. Also, we are helping out with the younger kids for basketball there. We got, we're trying to get, some kids are having a problem paying their recreation fee, so we are helping them out, too, you know, and we're trying to make sure that all the kids get to play there. And we know it's expensive there for recreation. I know when I played, we didn't have to pay nothing, but things change now, and, but it's a lot of little kids want to play, and we want our league to be strong, you know. Lima City Recreation League, be very, very strong, and so we're going to try to help out some of the kids in there. Also, you know, everyone needs to clean their sidewalks off. You know, I went around this morning, I see some of them, I know it wasn't that, it's kind of light, but we needed some salt now. And school was canceled today, but if it wasn't, a lot of kids have been walking in the street in my area there. So, if you need some help, we are trying to help, trying to get some volunteers together. I'll be working this weekend, trying to get some volunteers to help out with the other people that need help. Also, I want to thank all the folks who are donating turkeys. Thank you so much. You are going to be blessed for that. We've got many, many families calling, and I still won't say no to anyone. We haven't cut the date off yet. We're still helping people out, because good folks continue calling and purchasing turkeys and, you know, and I got, I got a call from one of the city workers there, and Jesse had called for me, and I thank, thanking for that, you know. So many people, you know, might not get to eat dinner, and I know we have it at Jerry Lewis', and that's a great thing there, but I love to see families sitting at the table eating. That's what I like to see. We are eating at the table, and I want everyone else to eat at the table. And, but also, Jerry Lewis' are having a great thing there, so please go. We think Sabalot. I was talking to Sabalot this past weekend, and they said they got a lot of good things they, they're donating, and so go to Sabalot, buy something to help out Jerry Lewis and his organization with Thanksgiving dinner. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Mrs. Miles.
Two things here. Just want to offer condolences to the Akron Police Department. Many of you may have heard that a police officer was killed in the line of duty over the weekend. To make it really sad, he was off duty and just happened to be in a situation where an individual was being unruly. He kind of, you know, being the officer sworn to uphold peace and safety, he stepped in and he ended, he and three other people ended up getting shot here. So, prayers go out to his family. It's always sad when you hear a police officer or a servant of the community, you know, laying down his life and dying, you know, in the line of duty. So, prayers go out to the Akron community, to the Akron Police Department, and to the family of this officer. Also, although the calendar says it's still fall, it is still frightful outside here. So, I just want to remind everyone, as you're driving, to be careful, slow down, teenagers especially. You know, I know you think you drive very well, but I, you know, I want to just, you know, advise, you know, the teenagers and the parents to talk to your kids about driving conditions, that, you know, to slow down and stay off your phones when you're, when you're driving, you know. It's very, very, the roads can look very nice and clean, but they can be very slick. So, teenagers, parents, everybody, be careful when you're riding out there. It was a very unfortunate accident this morning here. A dear lady lost her life, you know. Carla Dicer, a very nice woman. Someone just was driving too fast for conditions, and she lost her life this morning here. So, the prayers go out to her. A lot of you guys may know her son, Zach Dicer. He was a standout football student at Ada High School, and he went on to the NFL here. But Carla was very dear as far as working with young people. She had a lot of patience with them, and she was a very dear volunteer, you know, in the community. So, she lost her life this morning in a tragic accident. So, prayers go out to the Dicer family. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Miles. Mr. Gordon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for their prayers for my surgery that I had this past Wednesday. As you see, I made it through. I'm still alive.
Yes.
Survived it all. With that, I kind of want to mention about a trip that I made to Walmart shortly after my surgery. My wife insisted that I be in a wheelchair, and I should have, because I really couldn't really walk around much that day. And, you know, every other time I've been out in a place like that, I've never really been recognized as being on city council. On that day, three people recognized me while I'm sitting in a wheelchair at my weakest moment, you know. It's hard to believe.
That's because you just sat here, too.
Right. I wasn't quite dressed as nice, but. And one guy, though, came up to me and said, when, after he said he recognized me, he said, "What are you going to do to change the city of Lima?" And I'll tell you what, I really didn't have much answers, other than to say, I told him, I said, "One smile at a time." So, hopefully, we can all live up to that. And then, the last thing that I have is to remind people to be good to each other. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. McLean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder that Northside Neighbor Association will have their Thanksgiving dinner tomorrow at the St. Gerard's Cafeteria, and all the memberships are invited. I think we have a pretty good meal coming up, so if anybody wants to stop out, we may have some leftovers and come on out. And secondly, before we meet again, we're going to have Thanksgiving, and, you know,